Father, we pray that all things done tonight will be decent and order for building investments in citizens. And Lord, that we'll be representative for you. Lord, we pray that you would guide our thoughts and guide our tongues. And Father, that this will be a productive meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Miller, please.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Harris? Mr. St. Columbia? Mr. Ethelany?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Uh, present, one absent.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, members of the City Administration, those in our audience and person, those on Facebook, YouTube, Zoom, and other methods of being in this meeting. Tonight is December the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. This is a regular City Council meeting. The agenda as it stands has been, uh, it was prepared, and there were some things that were left off, including conflict ordinances that we've placed on your desk. It should be four. Mr. Ethelany sent three, and there was one that the auditors had requested in addition to those three. And there's two resolutions dealing with grants that's on your desk. And there's also a notice of a right to sue, and that's for informational purposes, showing the status of that employee's EEOC claim. It basically says they made no finding and that that employee, or former employee, has a right to file a lawsuit if they're subject. On the agenda, uh, we've been placing Mr. Andrew Shears on the agenda for an extended period of time, and I don't think he's here. Uh, and then Mr. Charles Coleman, who was left off the agenda. Uh, Ms. Miller and I had spoken about that earlier this week, and that was an oversight. Mr. Coleman is here. Mr. Coleman is here in regards to sewer problem on Beach Street. I believe it was a property that he owns. Been repaired by his plumbers as far as he can take it. Uh, he believes that the remainder of the problem is the city's problem to resolve. Water Department hadn't, uh, done it. The street sanitation department was attempting to do it. There's some equipment concerns. And I spoke with Andre Crawford, the plumber, who says that he will go out, but it'll be after Christmas and make the repair. And so I guess at this point, if you want, we could hear from Mr. Coleman on, in that regard. Cause I don't know what his statement to you all would be, but that's kind of basically the status of that repair on Beach Street. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilman. The problem that, uh, well, before I even start, let me say this. No disrespect intended because I know a lot of y'all are Dallas Cowboy fans. Just a shirt I put on, so don't get excited, okay? The, in nineteen sixty-seven, briefly, your dad, your dad, Dr. Miller, gave us a pep talk. Basketball team. We went on with Coach Taylor to win the state championship, Arkansas. We were promised a parade down Cherry Street. Nineteen sixty-eight, it didn't happen. So I'm taking this opportunity to also to talk about, not talk about, but congratulate those players and that coach, the community that supported us, our teachers, uh, folk like Willie "Pretty Boy" Mooney, uh, Milton "Cooter" Johnson, Odell "Tighthead" Sims, any number of guys we had. You know, we had some characters, including "Bodawal." That was my nickname. Now, with that being said, I appreciate it. The water issue on Beach Street, that's a historical street. Everybody knows that. I'm just trying to get some clarity as to whose responsibility that's going to be. And I continue to get, in six months, we get sewage water just coming in the apartments. I have one tenant that moved out. Another tenant is trying to hang in there. She has, uh, three grandchildren and a son that's staying there with her. So I'm just trying to get something done as expeditiously as possible. And after the holidays, sounds kind of harsh to me. So if the mayor, Mr. Mayor, can do anything, because it's my understanding, you said a long time ago, get it done. But it hasn't been done. So whomever we have to speak to, uh, that you have that's responsible for that, please, let's get it done. Just imagine if you had sewage coming in your house. Now, that's not every day, but if it's one time, it's enough that can give you, uh, E. coli. It can get so bad as to kill you. You never know what's going on. And we cleaned it up, and we put people in hotels at times when the sewage backs up. We can't keep doing that. So the only thing I want the council to do is, and the mayor, like I said, I'm not even including the mayor because he already said, get it done. I, I don't know, you know, um, if we can get it done and get it done before Christmas, to guarantee that no sewage is going to come back in that unit. Just suppose if on Christmas Day, the gifts are up under the tree and the sewage starts to back up, nobody would want that. So I'm here to implore, ask, and plead that in any way, form, or fashion, we can get that done. Now, a lot of folk would do, oh, you should sue, and you should do. No, we got enough issues going on in our city already. If you cannot support or have something positive to say, keep your mouth shut. I don't care if it's about the mayor, if it's about the council, if it's about Andre, who you, if it's James, it don't matter. That's what I'm putting. We have to get together and fight as a unit. Helena, Arkansas is a great city. Has a, uh-oh, Helena? West Helena. They are great cities. They used to be competitors, try to have the best of everything. Helena would try to have the best and beat our West Helena. Well, without Helena, we no longer have that. I would like to see an advisory board, if at all possible, Mr. Mayor, of citizens that when they have the ear of the community and boots on the ground, they, they could bring those issues to you. And then you wouldn't have an issue of people coming here and hoopin' and hollering about something. You'd have foresight in what's going on. We can do it. Now, I also would like to see the cities separated. Look at the man in the background. That ain't gonna happen. But with that, I, I think my issues have been covered. Uh, I'm available. We are here. I was asked to come back and give back. Jim Riley, uh, is deceased now. A lot of y'all may know Jim. He asked me to come back. Come back and give something back to you. So I've been back here now going on three years. What we do is buy houses, dilapidated houses, put them together, and give people affordable housing that are all ceramic tile. You know, we do the whole nine yards. That's what we're doing now. I purchased Dr. Prophet's house. Many of you might have known Dr. Prophet. It was, had been vandalized. It had been set on fire. We refurbished that entire house now and their tenants in it. Ms. Madamie Woodridge, who many of you know, is the one that coined the phrase, uh,
Teachers.
Who said that? You're the man. Teachers, National Teachers Day. Worked with Eleanor Roosevelt, got it done. Her house has been burned. I came back, I bought that house, we're gonna put that together to help put Helena on the map. With that, if anybody has any questions or if anybody want to tell me, we can get that sewage problem taken care of.
I have, I have a question, sir.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Uh, I recall I was served on the, uh, council, uh, when Dr. Miller was there, and I recall something about your basketball situation.
We were good, weren't we?
I, uh, you did talk about the things that happened in those days. It was wonderful. Yeah, absolutely. It should have had a parade.
Absolutely. Well, that's why I was, go ahead.
I have a business down on, uh, Missouri Street, and the sewer was backing up into it. And, uh, let me ask you, when this occurred, how did you clear the line, the gas problems up?
We put ramps and also had our plumbers to come in and replace all the, the piping from the units, excuse me, out to the city's, uh, they call, uh, lower lateral, uh, to the sidewalk. So, I mean, it's still coming in because it's collapsed.
Is the city sewer line stocked up? Is that what's causing it? It backs up into the sewer line there in the street? Is it stocked up causing that? Is something on your property that's causing the problem?
Excellent question. President Mayor, is it? That main sewer backed up, what, uh, compromised the lower lateral or the part of the sewer that goes into the main sewer from our property. Now, that's a historical brick street. Uh, it's a fine, um, old snap street. It's been gone thirty some years. Uh, period.
That, that story you're speaking of runs north and south, right?
Runs north and south, yes.
And, uh, it taps into the history which runs east and west.
Good question. Now, I know that, that's like a couple of blocks away. But it does have a main sewer manhole, uh, on Market Street, on the corner of Market and Beach Street. And it also had one on Miller and Market, uh, on Miller Beach Street. So Beach Street has two manholes, one on Miller. Now, those used to be stocked up really bad.
Okay, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
Uh, cause when I had my warehouse down here on Missouri Street, we found that it had sunk, uh, some of that sewer line in the street. They replaced it and never had any more problem after that. It had dropped down and called like an elbow, and it would stop up. When it stopped up, it just, are there any other houses other than yours, uh, that's stocking up?
There were, is my understanding, uh, but since they cleaned out the main sewers, I haven't heard anybody say anything. They had toilet paper and, and other.
So after they cleaned out the main sewer, it solved their problem but didn't solve yours?
Correct.
So.
And it is collapsed, just like you said.
What is collapsed?
The street itself. In other words, where our pipe comes out and you come, and you come on this side of the sidewalk, that street has collapsed.
Well, now, if it's, if it's from the street, street to your house, that's your problem. But if it's in the street, that's the city's problem.
I concur with that. But we have to be careful when we say that because.
Absolutely. We should be careful when we say that. The customer's responsible for getting that sewer to our main.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm talking about.
Our main is on the other side of the road from this side.
Oh, the main is on the other side?
Yes, sir.
So what, so what do y'all need us to do?
I just, well, first of all, I want to clarify this.
Okay.
This is why we've had an issue. One person is saying one thing, another person is saying something else. Now, there have been, uh, plumbers and inspectors out there, the state inspector's been out there, and they disagree with what James is saying. I disagree with what James is saying, even if it wasn't a historical street. Now, it could be a simple matter. They have cameras that they can put in there, but nobody's put a camera. Only thing I'm asking is this. Assess the problem, get it done so the people won't continue to have sewage. Now, my understanding is, my, my understanding, pardon me, is that because it, that sewer line, because that sewer line carries both water, I'm sorry about that, water and sewage, then it's the responsibility of the municipality.
Is the sewer backing out into the street or backing out into?
Excellent question. There is some in the street. I have pictures of it. Uh, when it's not in the street, it's in the unit.
But you go, you're responsible from your facilities, uh, to the city facility, pipes. From, from the main line to your house, you're responsible. You understand that?
I totally disagree with that.
Oh, you disagree with that?
I disagree with that.
You're not responsible?
No, sir, because that's the public way. Now, in West Helena, I guess they have a different set of rules and regulations, and, uh, that was the case. But let, let's look at it this way. We're not here to, you know, go back.
Well, we're here to figure out, uh, when we get it fixed. So we'll get it fixed as soon as possible. Mr. Rose is back there in the back, uh.
Uh, yeah, let me speak to, hey, what's going on, man? How you doing? First, definitely want to apologize for the, uh, delay, for the situation because it's urgent. Presented a plan to the Health Department to get this fixed, and, uh, with the mayor approval, we need to go ahead and move this forward. And so the delay that I want to share tonight, the, uh, the most recent delay is the fact we didn't have the equipment, as Mr. Valley mentioned, to actually get the repairs done in the proper time. And so now we do have our backhoe back, and we do have a plan in effect. And so I want to put on the table today that we look at going ahead and at least start digging at that sink area you was just speaking about.
Yeah.
This week. Soon as the rain pass, let's get it up and start seeing what we, uh, what's going on with that connection line to our main line. And so we do have, as Mr. Coleman mentioned, historically, there's been issues on that Beach Street. That whole line needs to be replaced. There's no way around that. But doing a construction of that magnitude, we don't want to necessarily start it and have to stop. When we start on it, we need to knock it out completely to where we give relief, not only to Mr. Coleman's properties, but the neighboring properties as well, because there are minor issues they're having, not as bad as Mr. Coleman, because it, it has to be a collapsed line running from the edge of the curve to our main line. But there is, uh, slow signs of backup in the neighbor's units as well, I mean, the neighbor houses as well. And so we want to go ahead and make sure that we start on this before Christmas and get a resolution to this.
Uh, well, is that same line in the middle of the street?
Um, it's actually, it, it seemed like it is, but it's actually further to the other side of the street. And so that's.
It's gonna be each side of the street?
It's gonna be on the west side, actually. And so.
On the west side?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, it's actually going to be not in the middle of the street, but closer to the opposite side on the curb in the street.
I know when I built my house, when I built a new home, I had to pay for my sewer from my house all the way out to the cat end of the main line.
Exactly, exactly.
I had to pay for that, and I was responsible for that.
Right. And so it, uh, it gets a little technical there, and I know we have to be careful with that. Uh, but also there's, in some cases, there are stub outs that the city put in, you know, years ago, and you actually just connect it to the stub out.
New subdivisions where they stub out?
Yeah, exactly. And so thi- this was, this is something that in certain cases were done and other cases are not.
Well, that's an area where the, the, the main line is in the middle of the street.
Yeah, but sometimes it could actually be in, on the whole other side of the street and the opposite side yard, you know?
There's still a balance there.
Exactly, right, right. And so it's, it's, it's different situations, but, uh, but I just wanted to put on record today that we're gonna.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. So Mr. Coleman, it'd be some, Mr. Mr. Rose has indicated it'd be sometime this week. So when, so when, so when is this gonna start? Cause, cause that's a health violation. So it's gotta be done regardless, whether who it is. Okay. So, so soon, like before?
Liz Day?
Christmas, maybe?
Tomorrow?
I'm sorry, like soon as I finish.
Oh, right. Okay, that's on, great, great.
That means that Santa Claus is coming to town, if that happens, okay? Oh, I have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And that sixty-eight team, that was coached by my mom, uh, grandma. So, yeah.
Sixty-seven.
Six, okay, not to sixty-eight.
I was, I, I played in sixty-eight, but I got kicked off the team for a while. Coach wanted to put the better, more education on our behinds because Marion beat us.
Oh, okay.
And I wouldn't take the whipping. Uh, so Mr. White, who was the principal, after we beat Lakeview and lost to West Memphis, Mr. White called me in the office and told me he had spoken to Coach Taylor. And he told me he's gone on now so I can speak about it. He said, there are some schools interested in you. We're not supposed to tell you this, but you have to be on the team. And if Coach says that you won't work, that's another problem. So I went back and they put a full court press on us. And, uh, that's how they beat us before when I was off the team, and I invented the crossover. Who's, well, that's a book, man, but don't worry about it.
We're, we're talking about it.
We can talk about that.
All right.
Thanks a lot for your time. One other thing I'd like to say is I hope this gentleman here gets back on the fire department. Every time I've seen a fire, he's been there. And I'm praying that some kind of way that this council, uh, sees, uh, and the mayor sees fit to, to, uh, give you a reprieve on that. As God is my witness. Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot.
All right, in, in your packet at page five and six, seven, eight, and nine is your municipal code sections on citizen participation in your council meetings. So you have the original, um, set of rules that was passed in two thousand five or so, and then there was an amendment passed in two thousand ten. And I think the amendment that passed, in, passed in two thousand ten, um, specified that if the city council member requested something, it had to be placed on the agenda. So, uh, I think the purpose of this discussion is the citizen participation by way of social media, Zoom, Facebook, or what have you, with the moderator, which is what has been proposed. And at this point, you all were going to discuss it, I guess, and I don't know if you want to do that tonight or do it some other point, but those, those are the, the kind of rules that you have.
We can probably, um, because I know that's something that I was mostly interested in, and, um, I do need to get with, I think it was Mr. Meadows or some other people who were interested in being moderators, um, and I think one of the money sums. And just, um, ask them what would that look like in real time. So we don't have to necessarily accept tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, uh, we could jump around down to your minutes, um, page fourteen. Just minutes from the December the tenth, twenty fourteen, twenty, twenty-four, maybe. Minutes from the December the tenth, twenty fourteen, twenty, twenty-four, maybe. If you like, I can summarize those. Or there's a motion to approve them as presented. Ms. Davis moved it, but we need to approve this. Ms. Miller seconds the motion, any discussion? Yes, Madam Kirk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Five yes.
All right, the next item is the proposed budget, and it may not be on your desk. I may have to get it printed before the end of the meeting. Mr. Turner left something this afternoon, um, so I'll get that to you. It's not planning action to be taken, it's just to be presented to you. And then if we can go down to page twenty-one, the Dexter Fortson and Associates invoices to be approved. In previous meetings, I couldn't describe for you, uh, exactly what these were for, but after speaking with, uh, the accounts payable department at Dexter Fortson, uh, the invoice, that's eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-five cent, involved, uh, a few of their guys coming down here in February of last, of this year, and going to basically all of our towers, replacing some of the antennas, making sure that the radios and communication systems work, uh, where the, these things could be automated. Uh, some things need to be repaired, some parts, uh, but they climbed up on top of these towers, particularly the towers in, in Hellens, River Hill, the, the South Tank, the West Tank, um, and Industrial Park. And so that was what the eight to seven hundred dollars for. And then the seventeen hundred dollars is some replacement parts, uh, that according to the invoice was ordered by Oscar Donovan, who's, uh, our plant operator on the Hellens side. And so all of those things are in order, and we need to approve the expenditure of ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars to pay Dexter Fortson for the services that they've rendered and the parts that they've submitted to us, one bill being well over a hundred and twenty days past due, as it's from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
We're talking about this, uh, shaking on this, uh, radio.
Yes, sir, it's, it says radio, but it involved more than radio. It involved the antennas, the, 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 all of the things that are necessary, uh, such that they can operate those tanks. We're not far behind on it, we're not behind on it.
We're not behind.
We, 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 we needed, we needed clarification, we needed clarification of what we were paying, because we didn't know, it just sort of bill.
We didn't know.
So we had to figure out what they had fixed.
Yeah.
So we're not behind, so we wanted, wanted to make sure. Yeah. With, with Saint Columbia, this has been presented to the city council at a few meetings, and there was a request for clarification as to what it was. And in one of those meetings, uh, Mr. Rose wasn't here, and I couldn't explain it, and so it was passed over, and so we, we've taken some time to get an explanation of the bill.
I'm concerned about these bills, you know, the state.
Yes, sir, we're concerned about all of them.
We had the money to pay him, Madam Shuck, the parent.
She has the money, yes.
She's asking for approval. This is asking for approval to pay these bills.
Yeah, but we can't approve it if we don't have the money.
She's asking, she has the money.
Okay, then I make the motion to pay the bill.
You, all the bills that, that are printed, all the bills?
No, not all, I took it all.
It's just one.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to pay it, um. Dexter Fortson and Associates, Mr. Miller seconded the motion, any discussion? We're talking about the one you just made the motion of, for eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Any discussion? No, ma'am, it's on both. It's just the one statement, it's two, two invoices on the one.
Ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So let me correct, that's ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents, that's your motion?
That's what we owe.
Mr. Mr. Miller, so any discussion? Madam Kirk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yeah.
Five yes.
All right, on page twenty-three, twenty-four, I guess would be the actual invoice.
Yeah.
Another invoice from Jones Hydraulics, uh, well, Jones Hydro Services. Uh, they typically work on our, our wells and things of that nature. Uh, this invoice is where they disassemble, clean, inspect it, replace the bearing, assemble, test a fifty horsepower motor, um, and in the invoice, if I remember right, it tells us where they see it. I think this is the Missouri Street well. Let me. It's in the invoice. Yeah, that's Missouri Street, and the one behind it is the, uh, Bisco Street. So, now that's, that one is the Bisco Street, the one behind that is the Missouri Street. So on Bisco Street, um, including labor, eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars, the invoice is forty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. And this work, this invoice is dated December the nineteenth.
Well, we have a report every time a city, um, the water department, the garden manager, what we have coming in, all that.
We can get you one, certainly. Uh, that's going, of course, that's going to change after the first of the month, when the new race kick in. We can get you one as is now.
You got, we got an invoice here for forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eight, twelve thousand.
That's correct.
Two invoices, and they're two different jobs, one of them is down street, where is the other?
One is, uh, one was Bisco Street well, the other was Missouri Street well.
That's a lot of money.
How much did we pay Jones Hydro Services?
Ms. Davis moved to pay Jones Hydro Services, there's a second.
Second.
Mr. Anthony seconded the motion, any discussion?
What motion?
To approve these payments for these two invoices.
Like all of them?
Yes, in, in discussion, Madam Kirk, call the roll, please.
Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Ms. Davis? Five yes.
All right, uh, on page twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you have the payroll resolution. Mr. Anthony asked at your table at last time, if that's something you still need to table, Mr. Anthony?
You know, seven days ago, I'm not happy. I've been carrying it so with me, I still haven't had a chance to talk to him.
Yes, sir.
This is a resolution on, uh, change, it's from weekly, uh, either two weeks of.
Send my mom. Yes, sir.
I thought, I, I thought that, I, I don't think we need to change.
We're going to discuss it next month.
Huh?
Keep moving it to table to next month, to the next meeting.
I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to do that. Kevin and Dennis, we're all on the phone.
All right, Mr. Saint Columbia, uh, let, let in general, the next two items we can get through pretty quickly. We got from Selfstock of these two resolutions. Uh, one of them is authorizing application for ACE DP grant funds, and the other one is authorizing, uh, East Arkansas. Yeah, they'll land on your debt. So one is supply for the grant, the other one's authorized East Arkansas Planning and Development District to be your grant administrator.
What does that entail, grant administrator?
The grant administrator?
Yes, sir.
Um, best I, I, I know, Cal, it dropped on me today, but is that the East Arkansas Plan is going to assure that the grant is, is spent for the appropriate purposes. Uh, their staff will be, they will take the administration funds to support their staff.
Do they have the fiscal agent account, or they have fiscal agent?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe we'll be getting it on a reimbursement basis, so we will pay this, give us the money back after that.
I got you, okay. So we do, we, we don't have to pay any fees unless they win, unless they win the grant, or is there any?
Right, but it's, it's my, yeah, because this is East Arkansas Plan, and we don't pay them anyway.
Okay.
So, uh, I believe the grant is technically approved, I think it's a half million dollars.
Right, okay.
We just got to get council approval and cross the i's and dot the t's, whatever it is, cross the t's and dot the i's.
Is this the first time we've ever had this? Or is this just an ongoing, something we've always had?
Well, we haven't had in the last two years, since this, this, I don't know if we had it before then.
I'm, I'm a little bit, we, uh, approve the ordinance, this, this ordinance.
Not either resolution.
Resolutions.
Sixteen.
I approve it, we have, I'm moving, we approve this resolution.
You know, I'm doing both at once, uh, separate.
Well, what was it, yes, both of them together, I think the other ones, there's no more than a question.
This is to pass, uh, one of the resolution number sixteen and seventeen, is there a second?
Revolting.
Sixteen, sixteen, seventeen. Mr. Anthony seconded the motion. Are there any discussions about the motion? Madam Kirk, call the roll, please. Any other money we can get?
Ms. Miller?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Doctor Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Saint Columbia? Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Five yes.
Okay, then the final things that were offered off of your, your packet are the conflict ordinances. The conflict ordinances, I believe we need to get them done by the end of the year. Um, well, Saint Columbia said he needed to read them, but they're standard ordinances, all would change essentially from one ordinance to the next, is the name of the person and stated their relationship. And so one is, uh, Corey Clemmons, who's brother of Latoya Harris. One is Matthew Harvey with Harvest BBQ, uh, he's on the AMP Commission. Another one is Robert Cheek, who has a position on the AMP Commission. And the other one is Lakeitha Fluka, uh, and her husband Derek is employed by the city. So. You going to meet again before the end of the year?
Sure.
You going to meet again before the end of the year?
Let me ask, let me ask, let me ask you, I, because I, I just gazed over these when we got them earlier this afternoon. Are there any, um, I, I think I saw for one of them, there was like a, a money limit, um, uh, before you have to disclose, or?
I think you have to be over twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, below twenty-five hundred, you don't have to disclose, I don't think.
So, so basically, so basically, we just passed an ordinance that if they do it, we do business, and they do any work with us over twenty-five hundred, that we have to disclose it? Is that what it's saying, or that we don't have to disclose?
I'm saying, what I'm saying is you have an ordinance already in place?
Yes, sir.
That covers you to up to twenty-five hundred.
I got you.
And so this will be above twenty-five hundred.
To what limit?
Um, I think it's up to fifty thousand now.
Fifty thousand?
Oh.
But only, um, well, I mean, like, okay.
On the AMP.
With, with Mr. Harvey, I'm not trying to call names out, okay, Mr. Harvey, we're probably not going, we're probably not going.
No, well, he is.
The, the, the AMP ordinances are conflict.
Got you.
And what it is, is Mr. Harvey, um, they had one of the catfish turnips.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Harvey provided the food, AMP paid for it, and, and we do reimbursement.
Yes, sir.
So that means he gets to pay it.
Yes, sir.
Now, it's the same, wait a minute, if you're going, he's on the commission, if you're going to do a reimbursement.
Then you should have to disclose that.
You need to, yeah, you need to do a conflict ordinance so that the council approves it.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Cheek, of course, is on AMP as well. He helped with the, uh, Christmas lights being put up, and it's, we do reimbursement. So he says, they say if you're doing reimbursement, you have to waive the conflict. And then Ms. Fluka does the Christmas break.
Uh-huh.
And so, um, she comes in, in the decorating contest, and she submits receipts, and we do that on reimbursement.
Yes.
That's from the AMP side, and they say if you're going to do that because the husband works for the city, you have to do conflict ordinance. So the, the, we have an ordinance passed by the city, but they want you to double approve it.
I understand.
All right, so, so that's it.
So basically, it's a reconciled order to say, we have disclosed to everybody, these people on AMP Commission or have connections to somebody at the city, and we, and we paid them an amount of money.
Right, it is a two-phase process. If it's under twenty-five hundred, you don't have to do anything, but it's budgetary.
Yeah.
If it goes above twenty-five hundred, not only, uh, do we already have an ordinance in place, they want the council to have full disclosure, and the council to ratify the relationship and see as it's conflict.
Okay.
And so that's, that's what it is. It isn't authorized, it isn't to award a contract to anybody.
All right, right.
It isn't to give them fifty thousand dollars.
It's just to disclose that we did business with them.
Disclose that we have a relationship. And so. Well, it's been on the agenda two or three times, it's been on the agenda two or three times.
Not, not the, there, there was a lapse in the communication, I had some Thursday as consistent with the city code that these were placed on the agenda.
What I'm saying?
Ms. Ms. Ramsey forwarded the message for me, and it did not get on the agenda, so, so the AMP ordinances are properly before us.
The issue I'm saying is this is the standard?
Yeah.
Standard one that's, that's been done for everybody, as it relates to.
We already waived, uh, the conflict with Thrive because Mr. Staley is on AMP, so these are one that.
I got you, okay.
Right.
Are there numbers for these?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-nine.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinances, you said twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, can I do that?
I'll second.
I don't have.
Well, if we, I did, I did the AMP and ordinance form.
Okay.
But if it can be a resolution, then we can change it.
I got an ordinance.
Oh, they're ordinances, well, we got to run one at a time.
Yeah, he submitted an ordinance. And it's the standard order, we adopted the same thing last year.
Okay.
Different people with the same order.
There's a motion for a second.
There's Mr. Clemmons, number twenty-two, and, I mean, who's, who's who?
Sanders was signed number, yeah.
Mr. Cheek.
Yeah. Which is which?
The first one you'll pass is twenty-two.
And that's, and that's, and that's who?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, fifty-five.
I don't know who's got it on top. Who's the first one, Mr. Valley? Corey Clemmons?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so Corey Clemmons is twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Since this is an order form, this, this, this Miller, will you amend it to say suspend rule place the third and finally reading the title on?
So moved.
Second.
Are y'all taking these?
I know you need a second, but.
Are y'all taking all three of them at the same time?
All four.
All four.
Yeah.
Collected, yeah.
You're spending rules on all four?
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Which one is twenty-three?
We, we were, we were getting to that.
Cheek.
Mr. Cheek is twenty.
Um, Mr. Harvey, twenty-four, and Ms. Fluka, twenty-five, is that okay?
As it relates to those order, the, the titles are all the same, the ordinance of way conflict ventures regarding vendor contract who is related to a specific employee, city council member, or commission member. Refiling all orders of parts, ordinances, or ordinance in conflict here when declared, or registered for other purposes.
Yeah.
That's twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So the motion on the table to suspend rules.
Davis?
Yes.
Saint Columbia?
Yeah.
Doctor Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Five yes.
Is the motion to adopt all four?
So moved.
This second moves to adopt, second. Mr. Miller seconded the motion, any discussion?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Five yes.
Emergency clause reads that, uh, due to compelling need to comply with state law regarding to waive the conflict of interest concerned business arrangements and particular city contracts and purchase individuals entered this with family, with close family or family ties, as city government body members, city officials, city employees emergency declared to exist, this ordinance may necessarily protect and promote the public peace, health, and safety, and emergency is hereby declared. Uh, this ordinance will take effect immediately, from and after its passage. So the motion to adopt all four on emergency basis.
So.
Mr. Miller moves to adopt all four, Mr. Mr. Miller seconded the motion, any discussion? Mister Miller moves to adopt all four, Mister, Mister Miller second's the motion, any discussion?
Mister Saint Columbia? Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Miss Davis? Miss Miller?
Yes.
Mister Anthony?
Yes.
Five yes.
All right, um, the only other item that I see on the agenda and I think we've covered the things that were left off is item C and D. Uh, items on the section C six, uh, section six C is Demarcus Borm. Section six D with the stars, Ann North Smith.
The matter of DeMarcus Borm is an employee matter and that would have to be an executive session. However, executive sessions are closed on the people to be in the executive session is the mayor, the city council, the media supervisor and the, uh, employee.
So what now?
Do we need a motion to go to executive session?
As it relates to the city council, yes, that would have to be most of the executive session. As it relates to the city council's, uh, position. At this point, Mr. Borm is not entitled to a hearing, we used to do hearings and city repeal that ordinance to do hearings. The city council has every bit of authority to overrule the mayor's decision by two-thirds vote. You would need four votes for you all to overturn it. You all can hear from Mr. Borm and if anybody other than Mr. Borm, Brown or the city council has to come in, uh, then we have to, that part has to be.
He has a right to, to, um, always discuss in our private.
He has a right to have open discussion.
What?
He has a right to have open discussion.
Open or private?
He has a right.
Yeah.
As related to the city, the city position is private.
That's right.
He can waive them. And if it's private, then it only.
Only up.
Right. And there's no camera or anything like that, it's just open discussion. With you all.
Just need to make a motion for it. Okay, so we need to make them, so I'm, I'm.
So motion is to go into executive session, and go into executive session with Borm, Brown and the mayor can be in. And if the chief of staff can be in, if he is called in as a witness. But, uh, none of us can be, leave the city clerk, the public, the public can be in.
Okay, so I move that we're going to executive session.
Second.
Mister Miller moves to take this session, Mister Miller second the motion, any discussion? Madam, clerk call the row please.
Saint Columbia? Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Miss Davis? Miss Miller?
Yes.
Mister Anthony? Five yes.
Any decision is made would have to be made in public, so you all can deliberate in private, discuss in private. The decision has to be made in public.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. St. Columbia to come out of executive session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Five yes.
Okay, we're back in regular session now. Is there any action to be taken?
We made the recommendation to table to the next regular meeting.
Motion by Miller to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Davis, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Five yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by St. Columbia to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Davis, all in favor here?
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.